It is now five o'clock, February 27th, 2018. And I called to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the CDS Housing Assets Successor. And may we have roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Negretti? Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mr. Negretti absent.
This evening, we have a presentation. The presentation will be by NBS Rate Study Consultants. Do we do the presentation first before we go into the agenda?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I can start if you like, and then we'll invite representatives of NBS who has prepared the rate study that's before you. And because we've been working extensively over the weekend and even last night, it's been evolving. So the document that's being passed out to you is the latest aversion, and that's the version that NBS will be speaking to as to sewer. Sewer will go first, and then the later presentation will be dealing with our trash rates. So with that, to just kick things off...
A point of clarification, what we have in front of us is sewer, not solid waste. Is that what you're saying?
You should have both in front of you. We're going to do sewer first and solid waste second. This document says sewer. So with that, Madam Mayor and members of the council, you own and operate about 450 miles of sewer collection system throughout the City of Victorville, and that collection system is largely in city right-of-way. And from that collection system, you then discharge to interceptor points that then discharge to the Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority, or VVWA, as we call it. And they're responsible largely for the treatment, with the exception that we do, as a part of our collection system, own and operate a wastewater treatment facility at the Southern California Logistics Airport. We've commonly referred to that as the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Facility, where there you have the ability to treat both domestic and industrial waste. So this subject before you is dealing with collection system rates for both our collection system and the industrial wastewater treatment facility out of the airport, and also blends in the costs and the assumed costs for treatment at the VVWA. But altogether, the information before you largely is driven from a number of controlling documents. The SSMP, which is a document that we approved before, the Sanitary System Management Plan is a document that we rely on and are required from a regulatory perspective to have in place that identifies how we intend on and how we're supposed to operate and maintain the collection system. We've also recently completed a master plan of the entire collection system, which is a large part of what's driving the capital component inside the rate study that you've got in front of you. And then finally, and I think most recently, you're familiar with the condition assessment that we've been undertaking. We've hired a firm to basically camera all 450 miles of your pipeline system to get a condition assessment, to get a sense of whether or not the pipeline is in good condition, bad condition, need of improvement, or even expansion. So those are precursors that have been done over the last few years that really drive and shape the work to be done in managing and maintaining the system, but also improving the capital over the year. I think the important part to note why we're here tonight is that the last rate increase that we've seen in Victorville dates back to 2012, and that's when we adopted a maximum ceiling rate of $26.89 an EDU. And fundamentally, what's occurred since that period of time, that $26.89 includes two components, a pass-through component to VVWA for their treatment, don't quote me on the numbers, but just for illustration's sake, let's call that $20 an EDU back in 2012. And the difference, the $6.89, let's just call it $7, would effectively be the amount of money that you were entitled then to retain, to use, to operate and maintain the system. Over that period of time dating back to 2012, we, VVWA, has raised their rates. We've absorbed those rates in the $26.89, not changing it, and therefore, it's actually been impacting the amount of revenue that we've been able to rely on to manage and maintain our system. We're at a point now, based upon the capital improvements needed, the operating cost increases that we've been dealing with, and the regulatory oversight that we're under to manage the system properly, it's that time where we do feel that there are fiscal constraints if rates are not addressed. So with that, we've been working with NBS for some time now, and they've put together a study for you, and I think now would be the appropriate time that I'd call up probably Kim from NBS unless Doug behind you has anything to add. Okay. And mind you, I just want, as we introduce Kim Baylor, I just want to remind you, we've worked with NBS before, have had a good experience with NBS. They were the firm that we relied on to do our last rate study involving the water system. So, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Do you have the, okay, there we go, there's the Power Plant Presentation. So, we're going to be covering water, or, I'm sorry, sewer and refuse rates tonight. An outline of the presentation is here up on this slide. I'm just going to do a brief overview of Proposition 218 and the rate study methodology that we used for both studies. I'm going to talk about the sewer rate study, and then I'm going to turn it over to Greg Klumner, who will talk about the refuse rate study. So, Proposition 218, this was a constitutional amendment that was passed in 1996. It's known commonly as the Right to Vote on New Taxes Act. There were a couple of requirements that came out of this proposition. One is that rates must reflect the proportionate cost of service for each customer class. The proposition also outlines that we cannot provide subsidies to certain customer classes. Rates must be used only for the purposes that they're collected for. So any revenue that's coming into the sewer utility from rates needs to be used on the operations, maintenance of the collection system, treatment plant, and for capital improvements. We cannot use rate revenue to fund general government services, such as police, fire, ambulance, libraries, et cetera. The procedural requirements from Proposition 218, there is a protest ballot procedure when an agency adopts new rates. The process that we go through is a notice is sent to all customers or property owners that would be affected by the rate increase. The notice will outline the date, time, and place of public hearing, what the proposed rates are, how they're calculated, all of that information. A public hearing is held 45 days after the notice is mailed, and then if there is not a majority protest, the new rates can be adopted. So, the methodology that we followed to complete both rate studies is up here on this slide. There are three major components of any rate study. We do a financial plan, and then we do a cost of service analysis, and then the third step is the rate design. And I'll talk about all three components here. So, the financial plan, this is where we look at all of the expenses for each utility. So we look at everything from your operating and maintenance expenses, debt service payments, capital costs. We look at your reserve funds and make some recommendations on what appropriate reserve fund targets there should be for each utility, because every utility needs to have reserve funds in place to be able to address emergencies, handle cash flow cycles, all of that. So those four components primarily make up the total revenue requirement. This is where we know, you know, how much revenue do we need to collect from everybody?
I'm sorry, are those reserves 6.5 million?
Yes, I believe, we'll get into the details of each reserve fund for what we're recommending for each utility on a later slide, but that rings a bell for total, I think, total reserves for sewer. So, starting off with the operations and maintenance component, this is where we look at all of your operating and maintenance costs. We take your current budget, and we project what expenditures are going to be for the next five to 10-year period. We apply specific inflation factors to the various expenditures in each budget. There's a table up here that lists the inflation factors that we've applied to certain costs. So, general cost inflation is about 2.7%. We've applied this inflation factor to most of the expenditures in each utility's budget. Then we get a little bit more specific. So fuel cost inflation is 9% in the area. Transportation cost inflation is 4%. We use 6% for utilities. For the CCTV expenditures, there's a 2% inflation factor. For VVWA treatment, we've projected that those costs would increase by about 7% per year for the next five years. The contract expenses for the industrial wastewater treatment plant are increasing by six, about 6.5%. And then your hauling charges, we've applied a 3.5% inflation factor. Your disposal landfill costs, we've applied a 2.5% inflation factor. And then for the material recoveries, facility operation, 6.5% inflation factor.
What is the IWWTP contract? People that operate our plant?
Yes, it's the watered-in-cure and expense. The second component of the financial plan is the capital improvement cost. So this is where we look at the city's planned capital expenditures for the utilities. We look at what the costs are, what the timing of those costs need to be, and then we determine how we're going to fund the capital improvement program. So, in this plan, it's all coming from existing cash reserves, incoming rate revenue, and then there is also a need for rate increases in order to fully fund the capital improvement program.
Not new development capital, this is replacing existing...
Yes, that's correct. And then when we look at cash reserves, we look at what the city has in reserve for each utility, and then we compare that to your expenditures and, you know, peg a certain capital reserve targets that we need to have for certain purposes. So, we need to hold reserves for operating purposes. We typically tie that to operating and maintenance expenses. We need to have capital rehab and replacement reserves, that's typically tied to a percentage of net assets. And then any debt reserve that's required, and that's only for the refuse utility, is equal to an annual debt service payment.
What is the debt? Where did the debt come from?
So, for sewer, we do have a debt service payment, and it's really an interfund loan from water to sewer, so we've assumed that we're going to pay back that loan. So there is not a reserve held for that, and then for solid waste.
What was that for?
The interfund borrowing to construct the wastewater treatment plant out of the airport.
I thought the loan was from the water district. Give them the plant, the debt's paid off. Now they have an asset on the books. You don't pay yourself.
There's a difference between the type of cash that we're talking about, rate-funded, water rate-funded, from the 410 fund, which is general water district rate revenues. That's the fund that's actually owed money from the wastewater fund. It wouldn't be an eligible expense to pay for the wastewater treatment plant out of your domestic water system.
Well, I think that needs to have a separate discussion, because the 30-some million dollars or more that the water district was for a totally different purpose, it's no longer needed once it was merged with the city. My opinion, it was no longer needed, because the capital that they were raising that for was not needed. I think that we need to look at that, because I think that whole debt fund can be erased and turned the asset over to the water district, and it's no longer...
We can separately look at that. We've evaluated that in the past. I can tell you right now, your current water rate structure does not contemplate that, so, but we can evaluate it.
Okay. It shouldn't make any sense.
If I may, though, I do want to add one caveat, that as a result of Prop. 218, if you've collected water revenues, those revenues need to be kept with the water operation. So if at any time, water revenues were used to finance or fund improvements in the wastewater operation, Prop. 218 requires that funding to be repaid back to the water side, and that's the reason why we are tracking that as a true liability between the wastewater and the water.
So who owns the IWP treatment plant?
It's owned by the water district as an entity, but the difference that we're talking about is fund-related. The difference between...
Costs $34 million to build, the water district loan the money, you're going to pay the water district back. They don't get the money and the plant. There's nothing wrong with this. We need a separate discussion.
We can have a separate discussion.
We need to look at that separately, yeah.
Okay, the second step in the rate study is looking at the cost of service analysis, and this is where we determine the cost of providing service to each customer class. So we went through a detailed process for each utility, and what we've done is developed rates that reflect the cost of providing service to each customer class. We've looked at customer characteristics in the sewer utility. We've looked at estimated flow and strength contributed by different users. And to develop cost-based rates, we need to follow industry standards in California's legal requirements, Proposition 218, where we develop rates by customer class. We don't provide subsidies between each class, and then we also can't charge more than the cost of service. So we can't charge one customer class more to provide a discount to somebody else.
Question, is sewer like water in that the size of the pipes depend on a large? All pretty standard.
So sewer rates, and we'll get into this, I'll show you the rate structure. We don't base sewer rates on water meter size. It's really based on the amount of flow that's being contributed by each customer class.
Size of the line and the size of the connection, so much as just the volume?
Right.
This raises an interesting question, if I might. Reflect cost of providing services to each customer. We have two service areas. One goes into the IWP, the other goes into VVWA. I'm told that the cost of VVWA is more than the cost to treat a million gallons in our plant. Therefore, all those individuals will pay a lower rate. Is that correct?
So, we did not evaluate the cost specifically for treatment between the two service areas. We were directed to develop a rate that blends those treatment costs together for residential customers. You have a couple of industrial customers that flow specifically to the city's treatment plant, and those rates are separate and distinct from everybody else.
Is there a reason that you can justify individuals in that area paying the same rate, although we've acknowledged that the treatment is less cost, therefore seems to violate this?
The acknowledgement that you're talking about is an acknowledgement I think we all had maybe eight years ago, when we first built the plant and first became operational. I'm not exactly sure that applies today. So when we started going through the numbers, it was easier and believed to be much more fair for the rate payer to look at it from a collective collection system perspective. So we don't necessarily know that that opinion from eight years ago still holds true today.
So there's an admission, then, that it's no cheaper to treat sewage in our plant than it is in VVWA plant?
There's not an admission, we just haven't studied it in quite some time.
It's just if it's based on actual cost, and the cost is the same, then this is another item we need to look at, because it may be advantageous to cancel the contract and contract with VVWA to operate that plant, because there's no financial gain for the city. Why should we do it? If it's a blended rate, and it's cost the same, and everybody's paying the same, and the cost is the same, what's the justification of operating a separate plant when we already have a plant operation that is the same cost as you're alleging? Therefore, we can cancel the contract and contract with VVWA?
I think, I think there's a couple of factors, I think, if I might. First, certainly, we just talked about the debt service. You've got a debt service obligation, and the being able to treat it gives you the opportunity to collect and retain a revenue system, a revenue component for treatment that could pay for that debt service. But secondly, we also have a byproduct that is a very valuable byproduct, which is the reclaimed water, that we can produce at a much higher standard and a much better reliability than we can rely on from VVWA, which is a sellable component or commodity to the high desert power plant.
You actually closed the loop for me, because where I was headed is we have a debt service, and therefore, the rate that we're paying VVWA is a huge debt, and what they're charging us contains a debt, and this is a different debt. They're not remotely the same. Cost of operations is not the same, but yet we're going to have a blanket use for everyone. I, I, I'm going to need a lot more explanation.
Residential flows that are going to, kind of balance itself?
It might balance. I'd like to see the study, because if we're going to hang our hat on 218, have a fee that reflects the actual cost of providing service, at the same time admitting that we haven't looked at some of the key factors that make up the cost. And I think we need some, we need that careful.
And what really is concerning me is, one of the topics is VVWA. We have, we're in lawsuit with them, and if we do cut our JPAs, if that's what we have, or...
We have a lawsuit.
Oh, it's an anticipated VVWA. Oh, we're not anticipating, okay, well, I know we're holding troubles with them. So, looking at this, are we saying that our SCLA sewer plant has enough capacity to where we can dissolve what we have with VVWA and then continue on with our own plant?
No, I think what we are saying is that the industrial wastewater treatment plant is a part of our system, a part of our system that not only collects but treats a larger volume for which we rely on our plant and the VVWA, and we have to rely on the VVWA, because the volumes that are generated from the city itself far exceed what we can actually treat at our wastewater treatment plant. So, saying it differently, what we've done, and we can analyze separately and share with the council separately, the cost comparison as to what it costs to operate our plant and treat effluent in our plant versus what VVWA does. But irrespective of that analysis, this study looks at everything that we own and operate as a collective system in totality, trying to create the most fairest rate for the rate payer, so that exactly that, you don't have two residential rate payers, one across the street from the other, one potentially enjoying a different rate than the other. It's not fair from our perspective, and having it blended is the only way to do it. We believe fairly.
I agree 100% in regard to the sewer maintenance, benefit of having the sewers, the benefit of having it all one rate. I totally disagree on the regard, the amount that we're collecting for the treatment of the sewage. And the question, I guess, under 218, is there any reason to make a distinction between how much you collect and where it goes? As from my understanding, apologists got sued because their rate didn't make the distinction, and they lost. So, they have to pay back, what, $800,000? I'd like to get that number. And so, in order that we don't get sued, we are going to have to determine how much is treatment, how much is for the sewers. We have to have the rate, we've got to justify. That's my understanding.
Right, so I'm going to get into the analysis of how we develop the rates. If we want to evaluate rates for separate service areas, that's something we can discuss at another time.
Well, I want to understand what's the base for separating whether it's residential, commercial, industrial? Are we using zoning to use as categories, to how much we're going to charge who? And are we doing separate rates from an industrial perspective to the other two? And why is that? And how do we justify, or what's the nexus for that?
Because they have different costs associated with treating their wastewater. So, the third step...
The wholesaler would pay in cheaper than a residential or a commercial facility, in other words.
I'm sorry? Is it? Right, yes. Commercial and industrial customers typically cost more to treat their waste than it would a residential customer. So, moving on, the third step in a rate study is a rate design analysis, and this is where we look at, how do we collect the revenue from each customer class? What should the fixed and variable charges be? If we look at these pie charts up here, the closer we can get to collecting actual fixed costs from fixed charges, the more revenue stability that we'll have in rates. And so, I'll get into how those charges were developed for sewer. So, major factors influencing the rate update for your sewer utility are the cost of capital projects and your treatment expenses. These are the two main drivers for the need for rate increases in your sewer utility. This slide up here shows a projection of your planned capital needs for the next five years. The city's planning for about $22 million in expenditures for the sewer utility through the end of fiscal year '22, '23. It's about $5 million on average that we need to spend primarily for the collection system and some updates to equipment in the wastewater treatment plant. Yes? Yes, it is, yes. Yep, only sewer. Yeah, so we're only talking about the details of sewer right now. Greg will cover the details of refuse in just a little bit.
Not to delay this, but I'm sure staff has a map with location and cost for us who want to know exactly where those are to occur, so we can see it ourselves.
Yes, so in the detailed packet that we sent out, there was a list of capital projects on page nine and 10, so you can see everything that the city's planning for the next 10 years, you know, when the projects will take place and what the cost of them are. Okay, so the second large factor for why we need a rate adjustment in sewer is the cost of treatment. So, VVWA's rates are up on this slide back to fiscal year 2013, '14. They've raised their rates about 8% on average for the past five years. The city has not passed on any of those costs to rate payers, so we need to make up that difference in this rate update. No, the city, you haven't had a rate increase in sewer since 2012. So, they've raised their rates about 8% per year on average, it's almost 40%, and the city's just absorbed that. This slide up here shows a history of rates for sewer in the City of Victorville. There's two components of the rate. The blue bar represents the portion of the rate that is for treatment at the regional plant, VVWA, and then the green bars represent the portion of the rate that is available for the city's collection system. So, to pay operating and maintenance capital expenditures on the city's own collection system. And as you can see, right now, there's only a very small percentage of that rate that is actually available for the city's collection system. So, we are in a place where we need to make a change pretty quickly. This slide up here shows a, it shows the financial plan, it shows the revenues and expenditures for the sewer utility. So currently, we're bringing in about 15... So, currently, we're bringing in about fifteen million dollars in rate revenue per year for sewer. The second line in this table shows the additional revenue needed in order to meet expenditures. So, starting next year, we need to bring in about four million dollars, almost four and a half million dollars in additional revenue each year. We have some additional sewer use, capital and connection fees of about a million dollars per year and then some small interest earnings. So, currently, in fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, revenue is sixteen point nine million dollars. And then the second block of numbers shows your expenditures. We have over twenty million dollars in expenses for the sewer utility. That consists of your industrial wastewater treatment plant expenses. We have other operating and maintenance expenses for the sewer utility, GIS, engineering, treatment at VVWA's, almost nine million dollars. We have potential regulatory compliance, a cost of one and a half million dollars and suspected next, next year. We have increased CCTV expenses.
What is CCTV?
So, that's for Cameran, the sewer line, and if you want more detail on that, I'm going to have to have Brian answer that question.
On that, on that CCTV point, we just completed the entire system, but we're required and it's becoming a regulatory obligation where we achieve over a period of time and it's either five or seven years, resur surveying the entire system so it actually divvies up over that five or seven years, seven-year time period, I think it is? Okay, so that's why I'm debating, it's five or seven years. But the point is, we break up each year into manageable segments to where we resurvey and get a more updated condition assessment.
If, if we're assuming a million dollars a year roughly in connection fees, new services, why don't we presume revenue increases?
Right. And something that can be dealt with later. It's a very minor amount of revenue that's been coming in. Actually, those connection fees are, most of that capital fee is from Dr. Pepper Snapple. And so, that is used actually to offset the debt service payment that's listed there as well of about one point three million dollars this year, increases to almost one point eight, over one point eight million dollars by the end of the five-year period.
They pay an annual connection fee?
Yeah, so saying it differently, in the contract that we have with them, I, it started out as one point nine five million dollars a year was the rough charge and inside that amount, there was a treatment component and a capital component calculated when we first structured that contract. So, a large part of this number, I think what Kim is saying, is likely to be that component that's in the Dr. Pepper contract.
I'm sorry.
No new flows?
I'm sorry, Kim. When you're going through all of this, I'm assuming that you, you assume that all of us are very knowledgeable of where you're headed. I'm, I'm having a hard time following if you're on the budget first, the financial year 2017, 18, which, are you going down through each line? And I do have residents out here that are very interested to be able to at least follow along, so please understand that even though the majority of them may understand, there's quite a bit of us that, you're speaking to us, these are rates that we're going to be going through, so if we can follow along, let, let me know where you're at. I don't know where you're at, at the moment, I just hear you throwing out figures and numbers.
Okay, I'm going, I'm going down the list of expenditures. So, that's the second block of numbers in this table. So, expenditures are over twenty million dollars in the current fiscal year. That's expected to increase to over twenty-eight million dollars by the end of the five-year period. With revenue of sixteen point nine million dollars currently in the sewer utility, you're running a deficit of almost four million dollars per year. So, it's actually, it's three point seven million dollars exactly. If there was, was no change to sewer rates, that deficit would grow to over eleven million dollars per year. So, it's not a sustainable position for the utility to be in.
Question?
Yes.
The, the revenue, sewer use fee, the interest is sixteen nine oh six. The expenditure is twenty-six seven nine. Obviously, there had to be reserves or borrowing. How much reserves, what are the reserves? And after three million seven seventy-three, how much is left?
Right, so we'll get into that in the next, a couple slides later.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so.
Revenue will either come from rates or?
Well, it needs to come from rates. There's going to be, that's, the additional revenue that we're showing in this table, that needs to come from rates. There's also a use of reserves that's happening in this plan. So, this, this here shows a graphical representation of, of the financial picture for the utility. The bars represent total expenditures. The blue portion represents operating and maintenance expenses and this includes treatment by VVWA and the city's own treatment plant costs. The yellow bars represent the interfund loan payment back to the water utility and the green bars represent cash that's going to be spent on capital projects each year over the next five years. The black solid line across the middle of the screen represents where rate revenue would be if there were no change to rates. So, we're covering our operating and maintenance expenses at this point, but going forward, we will not be in the future. Cash funded capital, so this is the amount that we'll spend on capital projects between reserves and incoming rate revenue.
Does the point in that represent what?
Oh, it represents the use, partial use of reserves, yes.
Capital improvements.
Yes. Right, exactly. The red dotted line represents where revenue needs to be in order to cover all of your expenditures. The difference between the two lines is, is the amount of the deficit and so you can see how that'll grow over the next five-year period if there wasn't any change to rates. Okay, the next step in this was looking at reserve targets. So, we started the current fiscal year with about seventeen million dollars in reserve. By the end of the five-year period, or by the end of this, by, by the end of this year, we'll, we will have drawn down almost ten million dollars of that. We also looked at setting reserve targets. So, typically, as I mentioned before, an operating reserve is tied to a percentage of your operating expenses. So, we did, we, we tied this to ninety days of operating expenses, so three months. It's equal to six million dollars. By the end of the five-year period, we'd like to see you have six million dollars in an operating reserve for the sewer utility. Okay?
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, I just, we talked about an over expenditure of, what, three million dollars. You're going to use reserve and then you just said reserves are reduced by ten million. Where was the other seven million spent?
Capital and covering the deficit.
What?
So, there's a.
There are projected figures, it's a projected deficit, it's projected income.
Right.
But the 2017, 18 ought to be fairly finite and based upon what's actually occurring in the first eight months and the projections are, you're going to spend three million seven seventy-three, if I'm reading this right, you're going to over expand, which means we'll round it off to four million that you must take from reserves. Do that, you said, you started with ten million and you'll end up three or four, I forget what you said now, but it's a, it doesn't match the number. I'm trying to figure out where the city spent the other money.
So, almost four, so almost four plus over six million dollars will be spent on capital projects this year.
Will be.
Yes.
Between now and June 30.
That is what the plan says, yes.
Projected.
Right.
That's different, okay, thank you.
Those are numbers derived from what your budget says for the seventeen, eighteen fiscal.
Budget's a financial plan and it's not an authorization to spend.
I think the point, though, in this budget is whether they hit exactly before June 30, they're, they're definitely.
That's what I was trying to find, where's the middle? A simple explanation is based upon the budget, if we in fact move with capital, we will spend another seven million in reserve, but that is the answer on what, how, how did it just disappear? So, thank you.
But we also recommend you hold a capital rehab and replacement reserve. In addition to planning for capital spending, you need to hold something in reserve to address other unplanned expenditures, emergencies, and we would recommend that you hold at least three percent of net assets in a capital replacement reserve, which is one point seven million dollars by the end of the five-year period. This slide up here shows a projection of your cash reserves over the five-year period. So, you are projected to end the current fiscal year with about seven million dollars, eight million dollars in reserve for the sewer utility. That's after six million dollars in capital expenses and covering an operating deficit. We would recommend that by the end of the five-year period, you have eight and a half million dollars in reserve. The blue bars represent your cash balances and the green line represents the total recommended reserve target. So, if the rate increases that we are recommending in this plan are implemented, you would be on track to meet your reserve target in the sixth year of this plan, so after 2023. Okay. Once the financial plan is finished, this is where we did the cost of service analysis. And so, we did a process and you can see in the detailed paperwork, it's in there, how the costs were allocated to each component of the rate. We have collection system related costs, those are allocated based on expected flow from each customer class. We have treatment related costs, those are allocated based on expected strength. So, these are, this is primarily for your treatment plant. We have your process treatment costs, those are allocated.
I have a question. We, we talk about Dr. Pepper Snapple and they, they give us a check for what, one point nine million or whatever the figure was, close enough. So, who are the other industrial users that write those large checks to us?
They're the largest, but you do have other industrial permitted customers. Plastipack is one, Help Me with the others, there's a few.
The prison and then there's industrial aerospace that's at SCLA.
How many of those who write the checks, the money goes for the operations of our plant? And how many write the check that's passed through to VVWA plants?
All of their flows go to our plant, so we collect.
Get our plant down to zero operation with all these fees. I still want to see a separate study, there's something that I do not understand here. Maybe Chris will clear to you, but if we have the industrial users and Plastipack and Dr. Pepper Snapple writing huge checks, that reduces the cost of operating our plant, which means if you reduce the cost and based upon the cost, end of year, operation of the plant is much less than the flow going to VVWA, which means all the residential customers should be paying less. Otherwise, they are in fact subsidizing the customers that go into VVWA.
If, if I can, just to help illustrate the function of the plant, there, there's two different things happening at the plant and therefore, you've got two different classes being treated at the plant. They require two different levels of treatment service. So, the easiest is described with the residential. The residential, there's two pipelines, one is a dedicated industrial, one's a dedicated domestic residential line, taking flows to that plant. Those that are in the residential, those are the easiest, they go straight to the residential side of the treatment plant and get treated the way they normally do, similar perhaps to how they're done at VVWA. In the case of the industrial class, they're requiring an added level of treatment before their effluent can actually get discharged into the residential side of the plant and there's a lot of chemi, chemical, you basically have to pull out a lot of chemicals, industrial chemicals to mainly sugars before it can be sent. So, it's like a pre-treatment operation that has to occur. And so, that big check that they're paying is for a treatment that is additive to what others, particularly residential folks, treat. So, it's not that the industrial users are paying for the entire plant, they're paying for their cost associated with the collective plant. There's still a remaining cost to be paid for by the, the, the class of users that don't use the entire plant, if that makes sense.
Well, they're paying that check primarily for pre-treatment because of the dissolved, totally dissolved solids that otherwise without pre-treatment would muck up the operation of the plant. Well, that's why, what pre-treatment is all about. So, thank you, that's, that makes sense now.
Okay, moving on. So, this table here shows the cost of service for each customer class. So, what we did was we allocated the collection system costs based on volume of flow. That, that totals fourteen point six million dollars. We have the strength components, the BOD and the TSS. That is allocated to each customer class based on estimated strength. And then we have the process treatment that's out, you can see that's allocated only to Dr. Pepper Snapple. And then we have customer related costs that are allocated based on the number of customers. So, the total revenue that we need to collect next fiscal year from, from rates in total is twenty million dollars, twenty point four million dollars. That is separated by customer class. We need to collect eleven point seven from single-family customers, a total of two million dollars, a little over two million dollars from your multifamily residential class. Right, so. So, we, I said here, we allocated these costs to each customer class based on certain components. So, treatment, this is BOD and TSS, is allocated based on estimated strength. Your process treatment costs are allocated to Dr. Pepper Snapple and then your billing related costs are allocated based on the number of customers by class. Oh, BOD and TSS, those are strength components of, it's related to the organic compounds that are in wastewater that need to be treated and removed from the water. That make sense? Oh, biochemical, okay, you want the, you want me to spell it out, okay. BOD is biochemical oxygen demand and TSS is total suspended solids. Okay, so here's the cost by customer class. We have your twenty point four million dollars separated out to each class. You primarily have your single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial customers and then you have your industrial customers, the Federal Corrections Complex, Dr. Pepper Snapple and Plastipack. And this table up here shows the proposed rates for the next five years.
Is there a reason why we don't have aerospace at SCLA there?
Aerospace is a zero discharger, so they, there was not a, we don't have.
So, we don't have to treat any of the sugars or BOD or TSS?
They don't, they don't discharge anything into the system, but the city has to monitor them. Okay, so these are, this is the rate table for the next five years. So, with your residential customer, single-family and multifamily, we're going to leave them on a fixed charge per month. However, it's going, there's going to be a differential which reflects the flow from those customer classes. A multifamily residential customer contributes less flow to the system than a single-family residential customer, so their rate is about seventy-five percent of the residential customer. Your single-family customer is going to see an increase from twenty-six eighty-nine dollars per month up to thirty-eight dollars and nine cents in the first year. By the end of the five-year period, that monthly rate would increase to fifty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents per month. Your multifamily customer, their rate is going to go up less than four dollars a month. That changes from twenty-four sixty-three in EDU to twenty-eight fourteen per EDU in the first year and then up to forty-one dollars and ninety-six cents at the end of the five-year period.
What was that, ninety-four what? After the fifth year?
It, it goes, in the fifth year, the multifamily rate would be forty-one dollars and ninety-six cents per month. Right, per unit, so per apartment. Your commercial customers, they currently pay a rate per EDU, but we have changed the rate structure for these customers for a number of reasons. The rate that we're proposing is a fixed charge per month that is equal to the single-family residential fixed rate plus a volumetric charge that reflects the amount of water consumption, which is represented by the amount of water that's flowing through the sewer system. So, their rate would be thirty-eight dollars and nine cents per month fixed and a per-unit charge. and a per-unit charge for each unit of water used of 3.36 cents per month.
So on an average bill, what would you find for, for one of these? Instead of breaking it out for EDU units, which that's not how we operate when we pay our bill, what does that look like for an average bill for each category?
I actually have some slides that follow this, that will go over that. Your Federal Corrections Complex, their charge per EDU is going to change from 26.89 cents per month to 32.20 cents per month, and that goes up to 48 dollars a month per EDU. And that's. Right, so it's, it's calculated based on the amount of flow that's going through the system. So we did an analysis to look at what an EDU is contributing to the sewer system, and it's about 193 gallons per person or per EDU. And so that's how we developed that rate for the Federal Corrections Complex. Took their total flow, divided it by.
It's what we've always been told.
I've believed that to be true as well, but I think that's also where there's another factor of charge that comes into play, and that's the industrial strength. There's a measure of the actual concentration. In fact, there's a commercial concentration factor is, is what we call it, and I know that's what we charge. So this is just the baseline EDU, but then also based upon actual flow information, constituency analysis, we can then decide what the concentration is. And if it's stronger, then there's a factor that gets applied, and that multiplies up basically.
Well, if.
It's similar.
It's odd to say that it has more total dissolved solids, it's harder to treat, and yet the price goes down and the single-family residence goes up. That'll require some explanation.
Your Dr. Pepper Snapple rates, currently they're paying, their minimum charge is 113,000 dollars a month, and that charge would change to 142,000, almost 143,000 dollars per month in the first year, and then that goes up to 213,000 by the end of the five-year period. If they go over their limits as outlined in the contract, they pay a certain charge per thousand gallons and also per pound of COD and suspended solids. So those are just like the BOD and the TSS. There's some conversion factors that can be applied there.
Reason for Dr. Pepper Snapple, we don't break down with EDU?
No, because they're a completely different customer. They are, they're very different than any other customer in the, the city's system, so they pay a completely different rate.
How are they different? We have to do pre-treatments, like, oh, is it because it's a beverage company? Okay.
And then we have Plastipack. Their fixed charge would be 137.18 cents a month, and then they'd pay a volumetric charge of 5.03 cents per unit. And then that increases to 204, 204.52 cents for a fixed charge at the end of the five-year period, and per unit is 7.51 cents. Yeah, so offices, retail stores, restaurants, all included in commercial. So here we have a regional bill comparison for a residential customer. So this slide here shows what the rate is in Victorville currently for a single-family home for sewer, what it would be under the proposed rates after the first adjustment, and then what the rates are in other neighboring communities. So you can see you're on the very low end right now. You would go to the higher-low end with this change with still a couple other agencies ahead of you.
So that would be about, the first year, about 132 dollars for the year, and then it'll increase till its fifth year, right? Because it's increasing.
Yes, the, the, the single-family rate would change from 26.89 now to 38.09. And then at the end of the five-year period, the rate for that customer is 56.79 cents.
And do we have the definitions for what single-family versus multifamily? Do we, do we define that?
We haven't, but a single-family home is, you know, a single-family home in a, a regular neighborhood. It's, it's not, it's not attached to any other unit, has its own separate yard.
Because I was thinking just one home that could have probably two families, I mean.
Right, if it's just one home, one single-family home, then it's a single-family home.
Does it matter how many people live in that? It could be one, it could be 10.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
So here, we're going to show what the bills will be over the five-year period for a, a sample of customer. So here's your single-family residential customer. We, we covered, I think, what their bill would increase to over the five-year period. That's shown here in the green bars. The gray bars represent the current rate. Here we have the average commercial customer. That customer has 8.21 EDUs your current system, and they're using almost 80 units of water per month. So their bill would increase from 220 dollars a month to just over 300 dollars per month, and then up to, it looks like 450 dollars by the end of the five-year period.
Then is there a reason why we're, why we're actually studying the rate increase rather than the actual? I'm, I'm going to call it, I know it's wastewater, but I'm just going to say water, so we can look at the nexus instead of just looking at the increased rate? Why aren't we actually studying the actual water to look at the units, how much is increased or decreased? That's the primary source, and then look at what you've studied? Do you know what I'm saying?
So, yeah, we have the detailed analysis. We, the staff passed that out. It's the 26-page document, shows the detail of everything. So we're, we're covering the high points in this presentation. So we're now just showing the bill comparisons, you know, how it's going to affect certain customers in the end.
Question, you showed the comparison of Victorville residential rate compared to Ap Valley, Hesperia, and so on. Did you do the same thing for commercial and industrial and show the comparison?
No, we did not go through that.
Thank you.
We have your average professional office. They're using almost 40, 47 units of water per month. Current bill is 166 dollars a month. That would increase to 194 dollars with the first increase, and then about 290 dollars by the end of the five-year period. And then we have the average auto repair service station. Currently, they pay about 50 bucks a month. They would pay just under 88 dollars a month with this change in the first year. And then they would pay over 131 dollars per month by the end of the five-year period. And this is all dependent on how much water these customers are using, so different customers will pay a different amount on a monthly basis.
All commercial don't pay.
Right. Yes, exactly. Okay, so moving on. The last step in this study that I wanted to cover was the industrial wastewater permit fees. So we did some analysis and looked at the cost of providing service for each activity that, that could be charged in, in this program. So we have an annual permit fee that each industrial user would pay. So this is your four customers, Dr. Pepper Snapple, Plastipack, the prison, and then industrial aerospace coatings. We have the permit fee listed in that column there that each customer would pay. 8,400 dollars for Dr. Pepper Snapple, Plastipack and the prison, 6,600 dollars, and then IAC, the fee would be 4,600 dollars a year. So the city has to inspect these customers on a regular basis, submit paperwork, review reports and things like that. So this covers the city's costs related to performing that work. And all the other fees in here would be, reflect the city's costs if they need, if, if, if these issues occur. So they're all for like non-compliance activities. If the city has to get a sample analysis, if we have to issue stop work orders, compliance orders, things like this, these fees reflect the costs associated with, with providing that service. So only customers who, you know, participate in activities that need to be regulated would pay these fees.
These fees aren't, excuse me, these fees aren't charged currently?
No, these are new fees. And here are fees for pre-treatment, pre-treatment plan check and enforcement actions if, if the need arises to perform these services. Okay, to sum up, the sewer rate study, the main points that I made throughout the presentation, you know, you have not had a rate adjustment in the sewer utility since 2012. There's a significant structural deficit that needs to be addressed. Rates, we always need to reflect cost inflation in, in developing rates. And so there's been cost inflation over the, the past six years for treatment-related costs by VVWA, the city's own treatment costs for their facility, and all other expenditures. So we need to make sure that we're keeping pace with cost inflation in, in any rate structure. We've made some adjustments to the rate structure for each customer class, that, that those changes are reflected in the rates for the first year of the adjustment, and then, then those rates would stay the same, and there's just a percentage increase applied to those rates, so. Right. Well, we have planned that their costs would increase by about 7% per year in the plan. So if, you know, if it stays within that range, then you're safe. If, if they exceed that, then that is something that you could pass on to the rate payers. But you have to make sure that's noted in the 218 notice that's sent out to all customers when you're ready to move forward with a rate adjustment, and then you can, you can pass it on automatically.
I think that was going to be.
Right, right, yeah, we don't, we're just basing it on, you know, history. And we, we talked with staff about what we thought a reasonable projection would be.
Yeah, and I believe that's the current scale that they're using in their current rate plan. But that was going to be the word of caution that I was going to offer this council and, and the public is, as we're dealing with this and we've been studying, what is the cost of service? What is it, what is the cost to maintain your system? That was one item that we had a placeholder in there that was assumed, and is assumed, 7%. So I think the one question, knowing that and, and not knowing what VVWA's rates are going to be for the next five years, I believe they're getting ready to go out and do their, their next five-year rate study. If it comes out higher, I think the question from me to Kim would be, if it does come out higher, let's say it's 10%, is there an advisable way to deal with that in this process right now so that we can pass that on, so that we don't replicate, if we choose to avoid from a policy perspective, if we don't want to replicate what happened in the past, which was basically using our share to pay their share?
Right, so what I would recommend you do is you put a pass-through provision in your Prop 218 notice, and you'd work with the city attorney's office on, on developing that language that would be in the notice. And what would happen is you would state that any cost increases from VVWA beyond what we have planned will be automatically passed on to rate payers. And then, once you get to that situation where they're increasing their rates beyond what we planned, you send a 30-day notice to your customers that you're going to increase that component of the rate, and you would pass that along the next month.
Those are higher generally than the inflation rate we've experienced.
Right.
I don't know has even applies because these are real.
Barry.
Based on something solid, has that got cushion in it?
Yeah, so it's based on, so for like fuel and general cost inflations, transportation costs, those are based on Bureau of Labor Statistics prepares cost inflate. They look at cost inflation for certain categories in certain areas of the, of the state, or the country actually. And so we've, we've polled these specific factors for the LA, San Bernardino area and use that. And then you have some specific cost inflation factors for certain costs, like your, your contract for running the treatment plant. And then you also have some specific costs, costs that are increasing in your refuse utility for, for certain expenditures there.
Is your prices because inflation? We're in business, you're in a consulting business. Which of these are manageable costs that we don't?
Right, so that's, that's not part of my scope for this study. You'd have to talk to staff about any adjustments to, to costs in that regard.
Sorry. Thought my voice was so loud you couldn't miss it. Well, that does concern me, that whole issue of managing costs as opposed to just accepting that everything's going to go up.
Yeah, and, and I have to say, this is certainly an unfun part of what we have to do, especially when we haven't been addressing it for the many years. I do have to share with this council, and I believe this council is aware, and certainly I share with the public, I'm not sure the public is aware. But managing and maintaining this collection system is a very serious responsibility and is becoming much more highly regulated from the perspective of the Water Quality Control Board. They are reviewing municipalities' management plans. They're looking at your master plans. They're actually making sure that you're doing what you said you're doing with respect to maintaining the system. But they're becoming even more aggressive when things happen. And when things happen in a, in a sewer system world, such as spills, those are the serious issues, the events. They happen, they happen in Victorville, they happen in, in every community. They're demanding, the water boards are demanding more and more protections in the systems. They're, they're asking you to look at the condition. They're looking, asking you to look for structural deficiencies. What's causing that backup? But it goes even further than that. And we found sadly in a number of instances, other cities are no different, where you trust that there's a manhole there and it's going to be left alone. But vandals find those manholes, they like to throw things in the manholes. And sadly, when that happens, we get backups. And when we get backups, we then get, we, we get fix-it tickets, for lack of better terms.
Spills and fines.
Spills and, and potentially fines, and we have to deal with those kinds of things. So this plan not only looks at resolving your structural deficiencies, but it also looks at improving the protections to your system, perhaps locking all the manholes more, more recurring regular visits to them. Some of them are in very remote locations. Putting alarms on them as well to make sure that if they are tampered with, one of your standby personnel is able to go out and inspect and make sure, is there a real issue or not? Hopefully not, but more times than not, you'll find a spill out there, and then you've got to remediate it. So it's, it's a fairly responsive, it's, it's a, it's a significant responsibility.
One of the things that bothers me too about the situation where costs continue to rise and we don't do anything about rates for eight years, what suffers is capital.
Exactly.
What suffers is a replacement. And those are the things that we don't see until they blow up. And when they blow up, we got a mess. And then everybody's asking, why didn't you deal with this? Nobody wants to raise rates. Nobody's sitting up here. Nobody sitting up here wants to go out to customers and say, in five years, you're going to be paying double what you're paying today. I don't see any option. We have to maintain the system.
So with that, Councilmember Kennedy and the remaining members of the council, so this item is really kind of the first step to introduce this issue to you. There's certainly an outline of next steps, which includes setting a public hearing to adopt resolution, which, if we wanted to try to achieve this plan and effectuate the rates July 1st, which if we don't, and if they get delayed, it actually has a potential to increasing the need for additional rates down the road when you do get around to it. We, as staff, would like to be able to use July 1st as the target date to get the new rates in place. So that would actually require a series of public hearings, and actually mailing of ballots out to rate payers to deal or handle, basically to do the protest vote. But this is really the first opportunity to share this information with you, get any comment, feedback from you, and we'll take that back before we bring it back to you in the next forum, which would be based on the schedule, council meeting of March 20th.
Will the public information show the full progression of rates over the five years? I don't want to just talk about a one-year increase when we know what's going to happen five years out.
Yeah, so I.
Got to tell the whole story.
Right, yes.
Well, before closing, I also have a couple of thoughts and also a couple of questions. So in the beginning, I would just, I would suggest and recommend that instead of betraying the trust of our residents, that we wait to see the costs from VVWA to provide our customers with an opportunity to be more involved in the process equitably. This is a tax, we've talked about that. Maybe, perhaps, not perhaps, actually, we should have a full explanation of where, when, and how a Prop 218 protest does occur. You stated it briefly. I don't know if it's that simple, you just get it, open it, and say yes or no, and then you submit it. I don't know if that's how simple it is, but something of that nature. Also, your PowerPoint presentation, I'd like a copy of it if it's possible. I had something here, but it didn't really follow what you had.
So the PowerPoint presentation, I just gave you a copy of?
A lot of the things that were there were not here.
Okay.
So I had to update a couple of things, and it was missing a couple of pages. A couple of questions is, are we charging more because our neighbor cities are charging a little bit more? We were looking at the Barstow, or Apple Valley, or Hisperia, how much their rates were. I don't know if your answer is directly yes or no, it's because we need to really and true maintain our capital. The other thing is, I was under the understanding or the impression that this fee was not a tax, but I think you kind of verified that it is a tax. You might want to need to correct me, because I'm thinking this is a tax, but it's not. So I don't know.
No, this is not a tax. This is a fee for providing service. Prop 218 is just known commonly as the right to vote on new taxes, but this is not a tax. Proposition 218 outlines the process and requirements for adopting and implementing any new taxes, fees, assessments, property-related charges for things like water, sewer, and trash service, which we're discussing here tonight. So this is not a tax, it's a fee for service.
Thank you for that correction.
To address two of your other questions, the 218 notice will outline the five-year rate schedule. It will include the date, time, and place of the public hearing that's required by code. And then you also asked if we're charging more because neighbors are charging more, and the answer to that is no. Agencies always want to see how their rates compare to other neighbors, but the market does not set rates. Your costs specifically here in Victorville are what is reflected in these rates. So it's, like I stated, it's the need to keep up with cost inflation, cover your operating and maintenance expenses, invest in capital infrastructure, and maintain appropriate reserve funds.
It just makes me think, because of the last time we did this type of studies in 2012, it's been six years. So what have we been doing for the last six years? Have we been subsidizing, you know, what took so long? So that was in the back of my head when I asked that question. Do we have water rights, and how much of the water rights do we currently own, if we own any? I know we use RQ, but that's something we probably pay in with our wholesaler with water. I'm not sure. And I understand that the Prop 218 is probably something in an envelope where the receiver receives it and opens it up, and hopefully knows that it's important. However, I think it's interesting how we spent $25,000 to inform our residents about a failed Measure K transaction and use tax, but we're not spending that same amount to market for solid waste awareness. The City of Victorville should support this type of expense and send the residents, homeowners, property owners, business owners, whether it's commercial or industrial, some type of notice, because as Keith has said in the past, and put some fault, he said, you know, I open up these things with these envelopes, and I just don't look at them. So I'm afraid that that's what's going to happen for something like this at this level. And I don't think we have an ignorant electorate. I think that we are here to help them understand the process, and it's best when they know that they're voting for something, that they're actually voting because they know that that's what's happening, not something that's more obscure, something that happens behind the closed doors of four city hall walls. So that's something of concern to me. Think about how we sent Measure K flyers, it was color, it was catchy, it caught the attention of the resident. Maybe the same level of care should be done at this level as well. And I already talked about the water studies, you said, you gave me an explanation. And I'm thinking about Schmidt Park, I know we use reclaimed water, purple pipe, right? I don't know if that's also considered with the category of wastewater, which means that we're, that's the savings that we have. And I don't know if all our other parks will also be using proclaimed water or this type of purple pipe, reclaimed, sorry, reclaimed water.
So reclaimed water is a byproduct, reclaimed water at Schmidt Park is a byproduct of the wastewater treatment facility. The revenues paid for that actually go into the business model to run and operate the wastewater plant. To answer the question about the remaining parks in the city, certainly we'd love to. There isn't a backbone infrastructure or conveyance system, pipeline. There isn't a pipeline that connects the airport to the other parks throughout the city. Certainly, we'd like to, but that's definitely a large capital spend that we have not, as a council, as a city, yet dealt with.
And then briefly, in a newspaper article titled California Today, it's California Today Use Less Water Pay Higher Bills. This was May 2nd, 2017. There's an interesting perspective about water and rates. It states, although California Governor Jerry Brown officially declared an end to the state's drought emergency last month, local water agencies are planning major rate increases to make up for the fact that they are selling a lot less water than they used to. When I read that article, you know, I was a little bit concerned, again, I'm trying to see both sides. I've noticed that at the city level, we bring out one particular side, and we don't do the outways and impacts of the other side. And I always like to produce, what if we didn't go this route, what would happen? More of a unbiased way, so that I can for myself rationally think and say, hey, you know what, they have a point, or you know what, they didn't think about this.
So I think what you're alluding to is not exactly on point with what we're doing here, which is dealing with sewer. But I can address that, because I think exactly what you talked about is something we dealt with when we studied water rates two or three years ago. And we were right on the tail end of a case down in San Juan Capistrano, where water districts were realizing that between their fixed and variable costs of the system, it was costing more, and there was cost to be recovered when water or less water was sold. So I think in addressing your comment, we've already dealt with that, I'd like to say, in how we've restructured our rates to where we've changed the fix and variable calculations in our water rate structure.
I don't have any further questions or comments.
I have one final, one final question. Excuse me. When we adopted the rate previously, we amassed the amount of money that it takes to operate the sewer system and pay VVWA and establish reserve and buy equipment. And so 218 does not require us to separate how much we are collecting for VVWA as opposed to operating sewer system?
No, it's just, it's one of your operating costs, so we count it as part of your total budget for the year.
The problem I see without council policy requiring those funds to be kept separate, the VVWA fees went up, they reached into the funds and paid the increase, and then allowed our capital to become deficient, and we didn't do the things we needed to do because, I don't know why, but I'd recommend to the city council that we in fact make the distinction on the fee and not mingle the funds. I think that's the intent of 218, and I'd like to not make a recommendation, but at least look at it. And I know on the water, that's a different discussion, but we raised the water rates, but we didn't raise it until we need it, but we authorized the rate increase. And then if it wasn't needed, it wasn't raised. Seems to me that the VVWA component of this could be the same thing, where we make the determination of the need and the growth, and we hold those in reserves, and when they raise the fee, we can pay the money from what the property owners and users have paid, and leave the money that we collect to maintain our own system and for the capital separately, because this just allows future, future. Councilmembers decide, no, I don't want to raise the increase, reach into the reserves, reach into the maintenance, or let our system kind of go to health to avoid a rate increase. That doesn't make any sense. I don't think it's very good government to do that. So as staff, well, councils, they have no, no, in their own mind, it's absolutely not needed, end of discussion. But seems like to me, the public needs to know because of the following. We have 61% of the users for the VVWA, so we're paying 61% of the cost to operate the Victor Valley wastewater system, and they raised the rates, and we don't even bother to tell our customers, because we take it out of the funds we've already collected, which was for the maintenance. Just doesn't make sense that we would do that, because they have no reason to object, they have no reason to file a complaint, they have no reason to say anything, because we're kind of covering the cost to a different entity. It seems like we're being short-sighted, so that's all I have, thank you.
I don't think you ought to factor revenues that we get from reclaimed water and all that kind of stuff.
We'll do our best. There's been changes at the plant. One thing, which is to say, variables have changed out there, cost to treat have changed out there. And one thing, for example, that comes to mind is the addition of capital, particularly the ion exchange units that we installed to help drive down TDS levels, so we had a higher quality reclaimed water. So that's why I say, eight years ago, seven years ago, whenever it was, we were dealing with maybe a closer apples-to-apples comparison. There's been some changes. I'm hedging a little bit, but we'll do our best to try to come up with something that answers the question.
Before we start on the next one, could we have a break? The next one, we have solid waste also here tonight.
Do you want a 10-minute break, 5-minute break?
That's acceptable to the rest of the council.
10-minute break?
I would think a 5-minute break is good enough.
A 10-minute break.
5 minutes will become 10 minutes.
10-minute break. So we are moving on to agenda item number one.
I believe this is item number two.
Item.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this item is now dealing with rate study for solid waste, and that's effectively your trash services. And just to introduce you to the concept, your trash services is going to include a number of components. You've got your hauling component, you've got your disposal component. Hauling component being the trucks, the actual trucks that come to your house and pick up the blue or the green can. You've got the disposal, which is landfill costs. You've got what we commonly refer to as the MRF, which is the material recycling facility. There's, that's the station that actually accepts the blue cans, does the sort, and eventually the reclamation of all the recyclables, and the eventual sale of that as a commodity. You have admin, there's a large administrative component to managing this. But with that, there's also a code component. And one of the things that I'd like to draw to your attention is the connection between this rate and the illegal dumping services that we're trying to get our arms around, which is not easy to do, it's labor-intensive, it's something that we're just having a hard time eradicating, but it's something that we've just got to accept and try to stay vigilant in addressing it. So those are, at a high level, the components of your solid waste system, and staff and our consultant can go into greater detail. I'd like to tell you, the overarching issue for us as a management, is the reason this rate study is before you, is that the solid waste fund is projecting a year-end budget in a very tight cash position. In fact, we're budgeted to end the fiscal year at $672,000. If we keep the levels of service the same in the forthcoming fiscal year, you're going to burn through that cash and run out of cash probably a quarter of the year into the next fiscal year. So saying that, of course, we have not raised rates since 2008, we think that's a large contributor. But I think altogether, it's been several years now that we've actually been deficit spending the cash that we've had on hand. So we're at a point where, from a fiscal perspective, this is necessary. We have employed the help of NBS as well. Greg Klumpner is our fiscal consultant that has actually helped study the rates. They've done the system analysis to determine what is the cost to operate the system, and arrived at a rate structure to help support your operations of this system over the next five years. And then I think finally, I'd like to note just that he's available. We do have Bertek, who is your franchise hauler, here in attendance as well. That's Mike Aragon, and he could ask any questions if you had any hauling-related questions. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over unless there's questions from council.
I just have a quick question. We have a fee for solid waste, we keep the funds, we, why is that unrestricted? Why are the solid waste funds unrestricted?
The term unrestricted, for the purpose of what you see in front of you, is not that it's their general funds, it's just on the financial statements, unrestricted is a designation that means these are available resources to be spent within that fund.
I would call it cash. George likes to argue with me, it actually is the function of cash, plus any receivables, minus any liabilities. But for my purpose, I like to use cash, and that's what it represents here.
So for the purpose there, it's still restricted in the fund for solid waste, it's not.
I thought it was restricted. You can't just put it in the general fund.
That's correct. So this is the available fund balance or the spendable fund balance in the trash fund.
Thank you.
And I have something as well. I was looking at the consortia between Victorville and Apple Valley, and I noticed that we have, I think it was whispered last year, I'm going to say, CDBG funds about $200,000, if I remember correctly, or so, $206,000, and it was directly for dumping. How is that related to this if we're running on a deficit? I'm just trying to see if you remember, I was looking at that yesterday.
I am not aware of any funds from CDBG that were allocated for dumping. Some went to code enforcement activities in CDBG target areas.
I'll point that out.
Demolition in CDB target areas.
I'll point that out to you later, then. I just thought the word dumping in my head equated solid waste and trash, and I was wanting to see if there was a correlation between both of these things.
No, there's not.
Okay, I'm Greg Klumpner with NBS, and I'm going to be going over the refuse-related rate study. rate study. So, many of the parts are similar to what Kim has talked about. Obviously, the calculating the rates is much different. I'm going to try to provide you an overview of just what the components are in the rates. To begin with, and, and by the way, there is the memo that you also have, which has more detail if, if you want to look at this and I can even refer to some of the, the tables in here. So, here's a, a brief summary. You know, you've got 29,000 some residential customers, less than 1,000 for multifamily, 1,290 commercial bin, very few commercial can customers and then roll offs, about 108. The, the one thing that is interesting about the customer classes here is that you've sometimes have accounts where they have several types of bins and several types of service. So, you have different bin sizes and number of pickups per week. And Dana, what was the total number of, of rates that we have? Yeah, so there are 350 separate rates and actually, a number of those aren't actually even used. But if you have a, like a four yard bin for commercial pickup and there's offered once, twice, three times, up to nine times per week, and some of the bin classes offer every other week or once a month. So, there's a lot of individual rates to cover. So, this is just kind of an overview of the types of customers that you have. But, but the rate schedule, once we get to a Prop 218 notice, it's going to be like 10 pages of, of rate tables. And, you know, you've covered most of the residential with half a page, but there's just a lot of rates. So, as we've talked about, this, the, the refuse rates are quite different from sewer rates. Sewer rates is a, is a, it's a fairly complex allocation process where you figure out the number of units that you have of BOD and TSS and flow and number of accounts and, you know, billing and all that stuff. And you have to allocate that out by customer class. Refuge is much different in, in many ways. You have a contractor who is here and, and they provide the bulk of the service. City provides some of the services, but you've got different components, which some, some are only for commercial customers, some are only for residential customers, but you've got different components that go into the rate. In other words, you've got, you know, right here, we've got seven classes of, of different types of fees and each of these are assessed on an equal basis to customers, whether you're commercial or residential. But the rate that you have, like for single family, the rate is, you know, they charge you one rate per year, but that's made up of all these different categories. So, you've got the hauling contract and the increases that are spelled out in the contract. You've got AB939 fees that is a cost to all customers. The commercial organics program is a specific cost for new regulatory requirements that are, you're required to do. Franchise fee, which we're recommending it be increased, this is a, a staff decision, but going from 4% to 8% for a number of reasons.
Is this a staff decision or a staff recommendation?
Recommendation.
Thank you.
Decision to recommend. The disposal fees and a lot of the new regulatory costs. So, a number of these, they're either set by a CPI increase that's spelled out in your hauling contract. So, that is what the contract says. It's not, it doesn't have the flexibility of saying, well, this year I think we're going to do a little bit less and that year a little bit more, just whatever the CPI is. So, the bottom line is that these rate components all go into each of the, the rates that we are, are calculated for each customer class. So, similar to sewer, there is a financial plan that was developed. In other words, you look at what are projected costs over the next five years. We actually go out to about 20 years. You look at the projected costs and what the revenues, similar to the, the chart that Kim had up there, the black line represents, if you don't have any rate increases, that's what your revenue, that, that black line there. As you can see in the first year, the, currently your rates are nowhere near covering the, the costs. So, that's where we have the deficit. So, where the rate increases, the intent there is that that dotted line will cover the costs every year. So, it's, it's based on meeting the annual costs. It's not, it's not much more complicated than that. So, you do have some debt service that is going to be paid off in the next couple of years. Other than that, it's pretty much all the O and M expenses. You do-
Have any capital investment in this, do you?
Yeah, well, the, and I was just going to point out that the capital investment there, there is some repair and replacement. You do have some assets that need to be rehabbed or replaced occasionally. It's, it's pretty small because the contractor has the, you know, most of that equipment. So, in, when we get to the, the reserves, you'll see that that's reflected in the reserve requirements. So, overall, most of your costs, the vast majority of your costs, really are just the annual O and M costs for the contract as well as the AB939, the, the various programs, cleanup programs that the, the city funds themselves. So, and then there's obviously administrative costs. So, this is pretty simple. It's a, it's a roll up of the financial plan for the next five years and just basically shows that the recommended rates are expected to meet your annual O and M costs. And if you don't do that, obviously, the difference between the top of the bar and the black line is going to be your, your deficit every single year. So, here's some numbers and, and this is obviously a roll up of much more detailed budgets. But basically, it shows that in your current 2017, 18, you're, you're going to end up with a 2.5 million deficit without rate increases. And that second line from the bottom there shows the additional revenue from rate increases. So, the first year is going to be, as in sewer, it's going to be a pretty big increase, $3.5 million. And, and that's, you know, mostly because you haven't had rate increases since 2008. So, you know, you've been covering that with reserves for quite a number of years and you just at a point where the reserves are, are gone. So, like you've talked about, the rate increases should have been done on a more regular basis, but when you haven't done them for almost 10 years, this is kind of what happens. After that first year, the, the additional rates from the rate increases clearly are, are quite a bit less. They kind of even out their, their small annual rate increases, kind of the way it should be. So, this is just a, kind of a, a overview of the financial plan. In terms of the reserves, so you currently have a debt service reserve because you have outstanding debt. That's going to be paid off in another two years. So, that reserve, and that is a restricted reserve, restricted in that it can't be spent for any operating costs. Once that reserve is ended, because your debt is paid off, that money gets transferred into the operating reserve. But looking at the way that most utilities operate, there's, in your case, we're recommending that you have two, two reserves, an operating reserve and basically a capital reserve. So, it's, it's going to cover capital repairs at the MRF. There was some discussion about the, you know, the debt for the MRF improvement and, and whether it's a good strategy to start saving up money to replace an asset like that, maybe it's 15 million, something like that. That's not typically the way it's done with public utilities. You funded the previous one with debt for the MRF replacement. That's what your existing debt is for. So, typically with a, with a cost that's big, that is that big, you wouldn't accumulate the amount of money to replace it when it needs to be replaced another 15, 20 years. That's typically not how it's done. So, this is to keep this capital and MRF repair and replacement is essentially money to cover repairs that you need along the way.
Pardon the interruption, but what was the amount of debt that we owe that's going to be paid off June 1st, 2020?
In, in another two years, that-
Yeah, what was the amount?
It's- Two, 267,000 a year.
And then how much did you say we had to reserve in order to pay for the MRF? 15 or 51 million, what'd you say?
Well, we don't actually know. That would be 15 or 20 years in the future, but just, just the point that's been brought up that when you have infrastructure and capital assets, they, they need to be replaced at some point and that's usually a, a pretty big cost. Before a, a complete overhaul or rebuilding, typically you have to spend money along the way just to keep things fixed, to repair them. So, that's what this reserve is intended for. Hopefully that makes sense.
Well, I was just, was it 15 or 51 million? I don't know if I overheard you.
Well, I said, said 15 million.
15, okay.
It might be 15, it might be 20. It's, it's 15 years in the future. So, anyway, these two operating reserves, the operating and the capital reserves are what we're recommending as good fiscal management. So, you know, the whole purpose of reserves is that you have money set aside in case you have emergencies that you don't expect and this money is intended to, to cover those kinds of emergencies and repairs. So, we talked about the debt reserve and this basically shows you two reserves. You currently don't have a capital repair and replacement reserve. You do have the money that is in the debt reserve, which is the red in this, this chart. So, once that's paid off at the end of 1920, that's when we're saying, let's essentially roll that money over into a, a capital repair and replacement reserve. So, that's the gray bars there. So, those are the two operating reserves and, you know, once, once you have, oh-
I have a question on the debt. This was for the MRF, is that right? So, we sold bonds, borrowed money, went to B of A, what, how did we create the debt? If we have a debt, who do we owe the money to? What? Okay. So, the debt is to pay off a bond issue. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's going to be paid off in another two years. And at that point, we're recommending that you create the, the new capital repair and replacement reserve. So, we're projecting at this point, these are the ending reserve fund levels total. The blue line there, dark line, is the, the target reserve. So, targets are kind of based on what recommended operating procedures are, what, what is good financial management. They're, they're not bulletproof. They're, you know, there's, there's some leeway in, in where you set the target reserves. These are kind of what is typical in the industry. They're, they're not, they're certainly not on the high side and we certainly don't want them too low and, and expose the utility to, to that, to financial risk. So, so this is just a good recommended target reserve level. So-
Just a question. George, you gave us a worksheet that shows an unrestricted fund balance, solid waste, 3.2 million right now.
That would be your beginning-
But I'm looking at a reserve here that says 600,000. Are we not talking the same numbers?
Uh, where are you seeing 600,000? Is that in the presentation?
Okay. Where's your 600? On the, on the- The reserve balances-
Can you take a-
In the financial plan.
Slide back.
What I can tell you while we're looking is that the 3.261 that you're looking at on the handout is for fiscal year end 1617. And then in table three of page four, the starting unrestricted fund for 1718 is that same 3261. So, the 600 that I think you're talking about probably drops down in that column.
Where's the screen that had the reserves on it?
Uh, well-
Just had. There.
Yeah, so- There's rough, there's roughly 2.6 million deficit at the end of the year. That's just the annual and obviously, most of that comes out of the existing reserves. Right.
Right.
Right. Which, which illustrates the reason why you need a rate increase and why waiting 10 years, you know, at some point, your, your reserves just can't cover the deficits that you're incurring. And it's not, you know, if, if in 2008, I think there was never any rating, uh, cost increases, no CPI or anything, you'd probably be in pretty good shape and, and probably would need this, but, you know, per the, the hauling contract, they have annual increases that have been covered through reserves every year. So, fuel goes up, disposal cost goes up, all, all the operating costs goes, go up every year. So, that's where we're at 10 years later.
I'm sorry. George, would you, for the record, please display, what was the conversation? I don't know. You might have added a little extra. I was unclear.
So, Councilmember Kennedy was asking the difference between the number that you see, the beginning number that you see for year end 1718 as just over the 600,000 and comparing that to what is listed in your staff report as the year ending for, for 1617. So, there's a year difference. And to explain the differences, there is, as the consultant just explained, there's an estimated $2.5 million of deficit spending to occur in the current year, which would reduce the year ending balance from last year from 3.2 million down to the 600,000 or so that's being reflected there.
That's a big increase in the deficit in just one year.
It is, but if you actually look at the trend, that it's been losing about, and that's, that was the point of that extra slide that I gave you. In 1516, there's a deficit spending of 1.6 million. In 1617, 1.1 million. And in the current budget, there's a, there's deficit spending of the 2.5 if you let it, add in some of the capital spending that was added during the budget time. So, it's been a, it's been a constant deficit spending, similar to the wastewater side. And, and he'll explain that. Well, I don't want to steal his fire as far as explaining kind of the reasons for the deficit.
Ready to go. Okay. All right, let's move on to the next slide here. So, the second slide that we had up there, that had the different rate components in it, you know, you've, you've got all these, the hauling contract, the AB939, the overhead administrative fees, the disposal cost. You've got a number of, of factors that go into each of these rates here. So, we've summarized, you know, we talked about 300 and- So we've summarized, you know, we talked about three hundred and some actual rates. So we've, we've summarized the most common rates here. Uh, obviously, single families, the, you know, over twenty-nine thousand accounts. Commercial is, you know, less than thirteen hundred. So, uh, these cover the vast majority of your customers, probably guessing at least ninety-five percent of the customers. Uh, with, with these rates, maybe ninety. So these are the most common ones. So, so the, the entities, both residential and commercial, they're going to be impacted by the rate increases. This is what their rate increases look like. Part of the reason that we don't have, um, like, hey, just figure out how much money do we need? And that turns out to be twenty-seven percent this year. Why we don't apply that just across the board and, you know, take the rates, the current rates in that, that second column there and just put twenty-seven percent on. It's because each individual component has to be allocated to each customer class separately. So the rate that you're seeing here is the result, the sum, of all the different components and how much they individually went up. So you've got some of these customer classes going up by more than others. Um, but once you get past the first year adjustment, uh, because there were some, some new rate components that were added uh, for some new regulatory programs, commercial, uh, organics recycling is, is one of them. Um, after you get past that, then we're, we're, it's more like, um, annual cost increases. So, uh, something like three point three percent. So, uh, the, these are the projected rates for the next five years for the major, the most common customer classes. And clearly, you know, the first year is, is a, is a big increase. Uh, and that is just due to that ten-year period and the, the cost increases that have accumulated over that ten-year period. So this is a, a similar comparison to the chart you saw for sewer. Uh, so Victorville's current single-family residential rate is the twenty seventeen, which is going up to twenty-six ninety-seven. And then that's, that's pretty consistent. And as Kim mentioned, what is charged in other communities has nothing to do with these costs. We never look at what somebody else is charging and go, oh, well, we're just going to copy that rate. It, it absolutely does not work that way. So it just happens to be that with the rate increase, uh, you're about where many of these other, uh, other than Barstow, you're about where many of these other communities are at. Now, when we put these numbers up, you know, we typically look at what their rates are now. Uh, we, uh, it's always a question, are any of them in the process or thinking about raising the rates? So some of these next year could be significantly higher. We, we, you know, these are only what their current rates are. And I'm pretty sure they'll go up over time.
So these are the, these are the current rates as it stands without the proposed increase?
The, so Victorville's current rates, the twenty seventeen, yeah. And then the new, the new one is the second green, solid green bar, and the other towns are their current rates. So this is what, for single-family customers, what it looks like. Uh, and as I said, the, you know, the first year, eighteen nineteen, it's the jump up to the twenty-six ninety-seven. Uh, and then there are more inflation-like increases after that. Uh, so this, this is the projection for the next five years for single-family. So here's, um, probably the most common, commercial is a three-yard bin, one pickup per week. Uh, but obviously there's lots of other ones. They're similar to this, but for comparison purposes, we use this one. And the current rate is the ninety-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Uh, that's going to go up to a hundred and eighteen fifty. Um, and then the comparison, so even with the increase, you're, that rate is going to be lower than surrounding communities. So commercial businesses should feel good about that part.
As, as they spread out over five years.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, assuming, yes, assuming.
But they are not going to.
Well, as, as we like to talk about in financial planning, like, we always do our models out twenty years uh, so that you can kind of get a feel for what, what's going to happen in the long run. But, uh, that's always done with an awareness that the farther out you get, the worse those numbers are. We, we just don't know what's going to happen. So we're pretty sure about the next year or two, uh, what happens in a couple of years from now. Disposal cost might go up, cost of fuel might go up. I mean, there's, there's a number of things we, that we don't actually know at this time. Uh, but these are the increases for that three-yard bin once per week for commercial.
Just a question though. Do they use a different truck to pick up?
Yeah. We, yeah. Di- different carts, different, uh, load capacities, uh, yeah, all of that is, when you do it every day, you get equipment that is the best at doing that type of pickup.
And then for, um, when we were looking at sewer rates, wastewater, now we're looking at solid waste. Are we still using the same cost factors when it comes to general inflation, the fuel, transportation, utilities? Are we using those percentages or is that just different? Because you didn't start off with that, so I'm assuming that both of these are somehow related? Because it's NBS, right, the same company doing the study but for two different? I'm assuming.
That, that's a good question, uh, and one that I would probably ask if I was sitting there too. So, uh, some of the inflation factors are the same, and, and, and where they are, we will use the same one if it's the same basis for it. Many of the inflation factors here are either fixed in the contract, the, the hauling contract, or a CPI factor, or what county disposal is charging at the landfill. There, you know, there's a number of these things. Some of the general, uh, annual co- just cost inflation in general, it, those are going to be the same. On, on page nine, uh, in the memo, down at the bottom, there's actually a summary of eighteen nineteen percent increases and, uh, charges for residential and commercial customers. So that just gives you kind of a, an idea of how many rate factors go into each of these.
When you say page nine, does it start with the current rate analysis as assumed? Is that what we're?
Uh, page nine of the memo that we, we have, uh, so if you just flip to, to page nine at the bottom, it should have two sets of cost factors.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so, let's go to the next one. So that, that's really it. Um, as I mentioned, uh, there are three hundred and some individual rates. That's, uh, something like ten pages of tables of rates. They're all going to be similar to the ones that you've seen here. They're, they're calculated based on the same cost factors and rate components. But in a, in a summary of the, the rate study, obviously since two thousand eight, you haven't had a rate increase. Uh, you're at a point now where reserves cannot cover that deficit every year. Uh, and it's, it's going to get much worse if rate increases aren't adopted. So you need to fix the, the annual deficit. Uh, the rates are based on those, uh, eight, nine, uh, rate components, so they're individually calculated. We actually have, uh, besides the, the memo that we have, or which goes into some detail and how each category is, is updated. There is a PDF of the actual rate tables and the, the individual calculation and rate components for each, uh, customer class. Uh, that's in a electronic PDF, and I'm sure we can get you a, a hard copy of that. If, if you'd like to dig into those results and look, look at the actual calculations a little bit more. Sometimes CPAs ask for that, so. Anyway, uh, after the eighteen nineteen, when the, the big increase is, like I said, the, the rates, you know, you've kind of, uh, bridged the gap that first year. After that, all the other annual CPI factors, expected increase in disposal costs and so forth, uh, kind of even out. So it's, it gets to be about a three point three percent per year. Um, and there's, in, in the, the, the memo on, uh, table ten, uh, there's actually a comparison of what those percentages for each customer class are.
But just briefly, the three point three percent per year would be increased per year? Is that com- compounded?
Uh, no, that's, that's each year, and that would be starting in year three. I think year two is. So when we talk about rate increases, it, it's, it's a little difficult because when we say twenty-seven percent, well, that's the total increase in rate revenue from all customers. Uh, but as we mentioned, individual customer classes, they're all different. Some have bigger increases than others, like commercial, uh, organics, uh, collection. That's a new cost that goes to the commercial customers that wasn't there ten years ago. But if you look at that table ten, it shows you for each customer class what the increase, the percent increase per year for that customer class is. So with that, we're, we're kind of done. That's a summary of the rate study at this point. And any hard questions, the contractors back there? No.
I have a question to staff. Really intrigued by the idea that we're now going to charge these trucks for Edison and Southwest Gas, the dog food plant, Walmart, Costco. Since the trucks are tearing up our streets, we don't charge one without charging them all. You know, staff's going to make a proposal of somehow collecting the rates for all these trucks that are tearing up our streets.
So Mr. Councilmember and the rest of the council, um, that's exactly the thought process that goes into supporting, um, the rationale of increasing the franchise fee. Currently, the franchise fee is identified at four percent. We're proposing as a part of this to raise it to eight percent, and that's a consideration for the franchise between the city and BRTech. Um, we've particularly, and there's also in the staff report, an analysis prepared by the city engineer to, to establish a nexus as to costs associated with the damage of, of those vehicles. Certainly for trash, uh, where the exclusive is granted. Um, that's where we've identified the nexus. And, um, more particularly, we believe those funds could be used to help offset, um, road maintenance costs. Particularly, we're identifying this as being a source to help satisfy our maintenance of effort, or the MOE as we call it, that's related to the, um, uh, SB one, um, uh, gas tech lines.
Are we going to do the study on all these other truck-related industries and how are you going to charge them?
I don't know that there's an actual real way to do that unless you establish a toll system. There's no franchises, and unless there's a franchise connected to each of those individual haulers, I'm not aware.
Can you explain the franchise fee? I, I'm just not clear on what that is.
Franchise fee is allocated, as the general law cities and charter cities can charge a franchise fee. What you do is you franchise a particular use, and then you restrict the competition so that that's particular use. For the benefit of that, pay a franchise fee. That gives them all the rights to operate on the city streets. We own those streets. And then they can go to the businesses. Uh, that makes sure that the rates are low as they possibly can because you don't have different vehicles. Uh, it was not too long ago.
Who do we charge? Who pays the franchise fee to who?
Fee is collected from the hauler, and the franchise fee goes directly into the general fund.
That's correct.
That's correct.
BRTech.
Doesn't go into the solid waste fund?
No.
No, the franchise fee goes into the general fund.
What's the franchise fee we collect for Edison? Gas company?
Don't know, but we can get you those answers. Don't know off the top of our head.
So BRTech, Edison?
BRTech, Edison. There's probably a cable franchise out there as well. Uh, we can get you a list of them.
Tow truck.
Telephone, yeah. I don't know about tow trucks. We can get you a list. We can get you a list.
I would like to be added to that as well, to receive that information.
We'll share it with the entire council.
Thank you.
Charge BRTech a franchise fee and then they charge us a hauling fee?
Correct.
They've got to cover that in their.
Correct.
In the cost that they charge back to us.
Correct.
And if you have some kind of a damage to the street fee, that goes, that's hauling fee, comes back to the customer? I'll point with a little tongue-in-cheek, and I apologize, but this is a way to raise revenue. Unless we're going to address all trucking, we ought not be addressing it. And if we're going to consider addressing all trucking, this is a state law that should be with the legislature. And they can make a determination of what that fee is that trucks pay throughout the state that goes into the fund for our streets and roads. And oh my gosh, they already do that. Talk about this. Here's to me, just my opinion, another way to raise money, and I don't.
If I, if I may just ask, answer that, we have other mechanisms to collect for road damage that occurs on the major arterials, the major corridors, but very little to take care of, uh, damage that occurs on the local neighborhood streets. And so the largest impact, um, per trip i- on local residential streets is, is quite frankly, the trash trucks that, that hit those streets on a weekly basis. The idea here is without having any other revenue source to, to maintain local residential streets, there is an allocation that can be made to that damage towards, uh, that can be accrued to, or, I'm sorry, um, allocated to the trash trucks. That's the idea here. By no means is the franchise fee, and quite frankly, the franchise fee is a negotiated amount that, in most cities, um, put in place to, to fund the impact to the right way of the city's infrastructure as a, as a, as a point of delivering the service. So in this particular case, the service is being delivered by BRTech. Its trash trucks are driving down the street to provide that service. They have an impact on those roads. The total damage that's, that accrues on those roads on an annual basis are allocated, that can be allocated to the number of trips that the trucks have, which is the reason why we, uh, staff is suggesting in a, an appropriate increase to the franchise to accommodate the damage that the trucks are having on the local roads. We have other, we have other funding sources for the major corridors. What we don't have is a lot of funding source for the, for local neighborhood streets.
I, I think this is a, a debatable issue at another time, but council will recall the amount of money we spent on Bear Valley Road because of the trucks, the heavy trucks, and the rolling of the pavement and the actual indentations. You can also, before they did, uh, Palmdale Road, uh, coming to the stop signs, the trucks had caused the damage. I'm very aware of that. I'm very aware of what those heavy trucks cause on these streets. I've lived in my house for forty-eight years, and I see no damage to the street caused by a trash truck. I defy anybody to find any damage. Way to raise revenue, you got them under the thumb, but I think it's, I want to discuss this because I, if the damage was there, he of all people is going to see it. I see it all over the city, and I don't see it on the residential streets. So I, I've got some real questions about this.
I, I can, I can actually give a good example because I see it regularly when I drive out to the airport, uh, have meetings out there, what have you. Village Drive is a classic example, and Village Drive is one of our, our, um, priority projects for this current, uh, and upcoming fiscal year to reconstruct and rehabilitate. A classic example involves where the trash truck is providing direct delivery service to a resident, and you've got a section of road that's not protected with curb, gutter, sidewalk, uh, where you just have edge of pavement, and you literally have trash can on the dirt shoulder, um, beside the edge of pavement. And literally you have that very heavy-loaded, um, trash truck straddling the pavement, the edge of pavement, literally crumbling, causing it to break. That's an example I see regularly when I go out to the airport. But, you know, in, in your particular case, you, you might just have a very well, uh, stout-constructed road. But over, over the years, and I see this in other neighborhoods, um, particularly like the old Inco Homes area where we do get a lot of complaints because we're not addressing road repairs in those residential streets. Those residential streets are starting to compete with the major arterials for the measure I money, and there just isn't enough to go around. And you can see where a lot of that just wear and tear over the years is probably more attributed to trucks than they are to, to autos. So it, it certainly, I've seen it myself.
Just, just as a point of reference, on, uh, page eight, um, down at the bottom, there.
Page eight?
I'll put my glasses on, make sure. Uh, yes, page eight. Um, there's a comparison of some of the surrounding communities, and those go from ten percent to eighteen percent. The four percent, if you look at other communities, is. The 4%, if you look at other communities, is, is pretty low.
So in this demonstration where you're showing us that our jurisdiction of Victorville, the franchise fees was 44, I mean, it's 4% versus you look at Apple Valley, 18, and... Oh, okay.
Right.
Then I have a question for staff, or maybe it's more of a comment. Historically, I guess, looking back, we see 2012, six years. We didn't raise the fees. 2008 going 10 years, we didn't do it for solid waste. Do we have in the plans, whether it's CIP, however it is that you guys do the processes, where we don't kind of leave this huge gap? Or what are we doing in that process? Is there anything? Because we've been in existence since 1962, and I don't know if this is the first time, or if it's consistently within every 10, 20, 30 years that you have certain gaps. I don't know. I don't have the history here. But I'm just saying, for my first year, I've noticed at least this much.
I, well, go ahead. I, I would venture to say, not without being here, that 2012 was a tough economic year. And so I don't want to speculate as to why the decision wasn't made five years ago to, to do the increases. But typically, you would do these studies every five years. Prop 218 allows you to go out five years, so, which is triggering to make sure that a study is conducted every five years. I think the plan now, and Keith and Sophie and the balance of the staff would agree is that we would not allow this, this to fall behind again. So after this five-year period is up, we would start to revisit again for the subsequent five years and so forth, every five years thereafter.
Question to staff. Since we're doing a study, looking at the cost of the collection and disposal, who did the study for the efficiency of the city staff in the billing and collecting? Management study. Well, we have an administrative fee. How much is that? Somebody knows what administrative fee do we charge? Because we do the billing for solid waste. Apple Valley does not. Hisparia does not. So we do the billing. It isn't just sending an envelope and the stamp, and the person's taking the money. There's other costs. I'd like to, how much do we use? Much do we divert for other uses?
And I think...
Solid waste.
If I can, I'd like to call Dana up. I think she can answer that, but I think that takes, that will potentially take us to the next place that I think would be helpful for the council as it relates to what are the services going forward.
I'll ask the question, and I'll put it in writing, and they can answer it, and all the council can get the answer. But if we're going to use monies for the solid waste and buy a vehicle and hire employees, Apple Valley can't do that because they don't do the billing. So Hisparia can't do that because they don't do the billing, and so they've increased the franchise fee because they still have trash and enforcement officers. We didn't consider any of that, did we? No, we didn't. I looked and looked and looked. It's not in there. So before we do anything, how much are we charging, and can we justify that? Because it isn't a matter of picking up the trash and billing the individuals and getting the money and paying BRTech and paying our employees to collect. We're involved in a lot of other activities. You can have a different page of all the things that we are involved in that we use the administrative fee for. I'd like to see that.
There are several spreadsheets that are prepared and that were factors that went into the end result. And there were inputs that break down the specific staffing and their role and their relation to the solid waste process, including billing, collection, and illegal dumping cleanup.
I actually know that. I actually know that.
Yeah, we could provide those.
And you're buying vehicles, recycle trucks, and so on. But you talk about the franchise fee and Hisparia, Hisparia and Apple Valley being a lot more. We need to increase it. But yet, they don't bill and collect, so they can't take out of that for these same functions. So they take it out of that. It's funded out of the other fee, which is the franchise fee. Since we do take it out of the user fee, we don't need to take it out of the franchise fee. Did anyone do that study? Did we compare apples to apples?
And so, as I understand your question, we have rolled a lot of the same services that the other cities are performing on behalf of their solid waste program into our solid waste program whereby maybe some of these other cities have, are operating out of those, those functions out of the general fund, and then funding it through their franchise fee. So we may be looking at an apples-to-apples comparison. I understand your question. So in, in that regard, I, I mean, it's potato, potato. How, how do we want to show it? Our recommendation for the increase in franchise fees specifically for the road-related impacts of the service, which there are some cities out there doing it in that manner. I would like, now that you've mentioned that, I think I would like to take a look at some of the other studies of the other cities to find out exactly how they're utilizing the, the revenue to their general fund of their franchise fee, specifically the higher ones. Apple Valley being 18%, is that, is that paying for any of the direct costs? Or is it, or is it strictly revenue to the general fund to pay for general fund services? So I will, I, I could take a look at that in the meantime between our next meeting.
I have a page of questions and answers. Staff, and they'll give a copy to the council. I don't want to take up the...
That concludes your presentation. Do you have any, anything else with that?
I still think it'd be helpful, and I'd like Dana to, to get up and speak to some of the admin services offered through our program. So beyond the hauling and beyond, beyond the recycling, there's a code component. There is a illegal dump where we're eradicating. I'd like to address, or at least share with you what we do. And also, I believe this plan does call for expanding, adding two personnel to help expand our responsiveness to the illegal dumping issue, which is becoming a problem.
Before you give the explanation, one of the things that I notice for many, many, many commercial businesses is that by the time the trucks come by to pick up the refuse, it overflows the container. It's all around the container. It's in the alley. It's in the street. And I'm assuming code enforcement has the responsibility to go to each of the businesses and require them to take a larger container or a bigger container? Are they actively involved in that?
Yes, they are. That is a thing that they do.
They're failing. They need to do that, and that's gonna produce substantial new revenues. I mean, this is not one or two businesses. Would you like to go for a ride with me? It's unreal how much they, they're underserved because they don't want the service. Now, if the sanitary, if the truckers were responsible for signing them up, I'd be angry at them, but they're not. We are. The city is. And so I'm assuming city employees who are responsible for signing them up and enforcement go out periodically and are very aware of all these containers that are overflowing, which adds trash to the street and the desert, and require them to put the container in an enclosure, cite them, red-tag them, make them get a larger container. But I don't see any evidence of it. I'm sure you're doing it.
Yeah. And that's something that we try and work with BRTech on, is get reports from drivers of customers that don't have adequate service. So it's something that we remind them about, and we'll continue to remind them about and be much more proactive with it. But they are, they should have the right size. We don't want them to have too much service, and we don't want them, because then they're paying for something they aren't using, but we don't want them to have too little service because of the reasons you state. It creates problems with overflowing bins and litter and, and basically a code issue. So we'll, we'll work with BRTech. Their, their drivers are visiting these locations every week at a minimum, at least once a week, often multiple times per week in the case of commercial customers. So we'll make sure that we get those reports from the drivers on locations that need to be right-sized. Keith, you had asked for me to talk a little bit about the city administrative or cost component of the rate. And, and there are several things that go into it. The, one of, one of the items that goes into that is our billing and customer service function. And that obviously pays for all the cost of the folks answering the phones, creating the bills, mailing out the bills, and all of those real admin costs associated with that. We also have a, a portion of costs from the development department. Code enforcement is, is included in the city costs, and that's costs associated with enforcing the codes related to solid waste management. We also have, the illegal dump cleanup program is included in the city cost component. The, the rate model that's been presented assumes that there's an expansion of that effort to include an additional crew, an additional two people to expand the illegal dump program, given council's direction that this is a priority, and we want to try and really get a handle on this issue. The, the city cost component also includes solid waste and recycling admin, so it does pay for me. And some other workers that are out there promoting the commercial recycling program, and some administrative costs associated with our function, you know, clerical and secretarial costs in, in the community services department. So, you know, in, in the fiscal year 1718 budget, that added up to about $2.8 million. It does, it does add up. And we allocated those costs to the different customer classes, to the commercial class and the residential class. We, we allocate it based on tonnage. We figure that's a reasonable method. It's the, the method you, we've traditionally used when we've done rate increases in the past. And doing that, doing that math, it, it, it worked out to the dollars per residential account, $4.31 per residential account. And on the commercial side, actually, that, that is before we added the other, the other illegal dump crew. So that added a few, maybe 10 cents more per month. And on the commercial side, it, it worked out to about $1.80, 88 per, per cubic yard on the commercial side. So that is what goes into the city cost component of it. And I think we, we do do a lot here in Victorville in terms of our illegal dump efforts, and we will, you know, hopefully be able to expand that further.
I agree. We do a lot. It is showing in the community. Unfortunately, we need to do more.
Yes, I agree. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
So, Madam Mayor and members of the council, this is our first time dealing with this subject. And it's our goal, similar to SURE, to try to establish rates by July 1st. So going into the next budget year, you have an ability to collect enough revenue to manage the system. But with that, similar to SURE, the steps are the same. We would suspect the next discussion involves a public hearing where we adopt a notice of intent from that. We would actually draft and mail the ballots to property owners. It'd be a protest vote, and then we'd come back for a second meeting, a public hearing, to actually verify the ballots, see if a protest exists. If there's no protest that exists, then we would adopt a resolution adopting rates, and that would allow us to stay on track to be, have rates in place by July 1st.
When do you think we'll have the first public hearing?
Current schedule, current timeline shows March 20th.
Both?
Same for both, yes. Yes, it is the same for both.
If there's nothing else, we will move on to public comments. I do not have any cards. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? No one? At this time, I will adjourn this meeting then.